Good evening, everyone. I can have your attention for a minute. We're gonna start our festivities, I guess, with a swearing in. Carl Buck, our village attorney, is gonna swear in the court, and then the clerk's gonna swear in the rest of us. Carl, you ready to begin, Mayor?
I'm ready.
Okay. Martini?
Martini.
You've given this a lot of times. You ready to take it again?
I'm ready to take it again.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I'm Melissa Martini.
Having been elected to the office of village clerk...
Having been elected to the office of village clerk...
In the village of Mokina.
In the village of Mokina.
In the county of Will and the state of Illinois.
In the county of Will and the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of village clerk.
The duties of the office of village clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Let's switch sides. Don't say don't. All right, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, George Montanius.
Having been elected to the office of village president...
Having been elected to the office of village president...
In the village of Mokina.
In the village of Mokina.
In the county of Will.
And the county of Will.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the office of village president.
Of the office of village president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, are we doing all of them together? Okay, can everybody stand and raise their right hand? I state your name.
I am Melissa Martini.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
In the village of Mokina.
In the village of Mokina.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, now, I'm gonna go around to the elected officials that got elected and re-elected. If you have a little statement or something to say, let's start with you, Nick.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanna say thanks, first and foremost, to the people that went out and voted. I've never been elected in anything in my life, so to reflect on the fact that people went out and circled a little bubble next to my name on a ballot because they decided that they wanted to put their faith and trust in my ability to make a decision on their behalf. It's quite humbling. So, I just wanna say thanks to the voters. Number two, thanks to my family, who supported me in making this decision. My parents, who were at every single meet and greet, constantly calling me, figuring out, hey, how can I help? How are things going in the election? So, without their support, I wouldn't have been able to be up here. Frank and Lori Fleischer called me one day and said, "Hey, wouldn't you be interested in running?" And I said, "No, not really." And it took some convincing, but I was inspired by the vision that he set for our slate and wouldn't be sitting here without the opportunity that you guys gave me, so thank you. A lot of people have been asking, or telling, rather, that I get my work cut out for me, being the odd man up here, sitting with my opponents, and I just don't, I don't feel that way. I don't see it that way. And what I feel and what I see is a fresh start and a brand-new team. And I hope to be a part of the positive change that we get to do together. And we get to decide the attitude and the spirit that we bring. And I just know that if we work together, the people of Mokina are really gonna benefit. So, I'm really excited. Thanks again, and ready to get started, yeah.
Josh, you're up next.
That was very eloquent. Thank you for that. I would also just like to thank the voters for the faith that they've entrusted in this new group of trustees. We were elected to continue the legacy of the friends of Mokina and the people that came before us to drive the community forward. And that's what we're gonna do. Thank you to my family, who went through some of this. They're sitting in the audience over there. My daughter's, "Please don't embarrass me, dear." I'm a family man first, so most of the, all the decisions that, all the votes my way are gonna end up thinking about families that are raising their loved ones in this community. So, not terribly good at public speaking. You're being put on the spot, so I'll just wrap that up and just say, "Thank you. We're gonna work hard for you." Looking forward to working with this team. Thanks to George for the support. Thank you to the rest of our slate for the support. Definitely wouldn't be up here without your help. Just very humbled, so thank you, guys.
Melissa?
Well, I've been up here before, so I won't speak too long on this, but thank you, huge thank you once again to the voters who came out and voted. The voters who came out and trusted myself and all of us that are up here with your support, your faith, and your confidence in us to steer this ship here. And whenever I vote on things, I always try to think about if I had the time and the luxury to go door-to-door to every single house, which we did during campaign season, but if we could do it before every meeting, what would the majority of the residents want to see on issue X, Y, and Z? So, that's always at the forefront of my mind because this isn't, this isn't my town, it's our town. So, I always try to remember that. And then, on a more personal level, thank you to all of our friends and family that supported us through this. They get dragged along in this campaign season. We know what we're signing up for, but they get pulled along with us and doing five, 10 miles every weekend for weeks on end. And weather was not so good through most of that either. We were in the snow one day, so thank you to the friends and family and everybody that supported us through that as well. It's very, very much appreciated and everybody who came out and put signs and did all of the things, so thank you.
All right, well, there's some great things to echo, but yes, first and foremost, thank the voters. We couldn't be here without them, but I gotta go right to my family. I mean, we, as elected people, we just expect so much from them. We expect them to behave in restaurants. We expect them to dress up nice and have, "Hey, can you wear a pair of sweatpants that don't have holes in the knees?" Just so many things that we expect from other people to get us where we are. And then, we definitely wanna not, not take for granted the position that we're in and not take advantage of how we got here. And I'm just ready to get to work.
Melissa?
Oh, okay, yeah. I just wanna say I'm truly honored. I'm thankful for all of you who have re-elected me again as a village clerk of Mokina. I appreciate your trust and your support. It does mean a lot to me. I also wanna give a warm welcome to the newly-elected Mokina mayor and the Mokina trustees. Looking forward to working together as a team to serve our community and make Mokina an even better place to live.
First of all, I just wanted to congratulate everyone up here that got elected and re-elected. Started with the Clancy, Josh Bailey, Melissa Martini, Montse Fedora, Melissa Martini, Dan Gilbert. Congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with you guys. And Nick, you're not gonna be, you're in a team now, Team Mokina.
Yeah.
Team Mokina. We're not in any other team, Team Mokina right now. So, looking forward to working with everybody. I'd like to thank the residents of Mokina for putting their trust in me for one more time. Twenty years as trustee and this time as mayor. I promise I will work every day to keep that trust. I would like to thank the Friends of Mokina team that, for all their hard work, for their campaign, that they put all their heart and soul behind. There's Melissa Martini, Melissa Fedora, Josh Bailey, Dan Gilbert, Colleen Leonard, and also like to thank Jim Richmond, Mike Dorbergh, Tom Garvey, Jim Schlegel, Israel Smith for the Mokina front porch that he did. There's so many more people that I can, I can sit up here for like a half hour gaming at least, but I won't do that. I will make sure that I, if I haven't contacted everybody yet, I will be doing that and thanking them. I also like to thank my family for their help and support. My daughter, Ricky, my grandsons Logan and Brayden, for knocking on doors with me during the campaign. It was an awesome thing to see, their supporting their grandpa. So, thank you. Also like to thank my Fox.
That's me!
For cheering us on. I always said, "Fox, you are my campaign manager." But thank you for all that. I would like to thank my wife Denise for putting up with me during this campaign. And I also like to thank her in advance for the next four years for putting up with me. So, I'd like to thank everybody again in Mokina. Thank you so much. We'll do everything we can up here to make sure that we move this village forward. Thank you. So, now, I'd like to have some pictures taken with the families, so I don't know if you wanna start with this way around or whatever you want to do, Mayor. Nick, I'll be bringing your family up here to take pictures.
Sure.
And then, we'll let them on the road here. Stand in front, love.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be easier.
It'll be better, yeah.
So, are you?
It's a long time.
Clancy crew, good pleasure. Very good. Carl, they had a good spot, or we need to look back?
Yeah, we're good.
Big smiles?
Big smiles, everybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, you're next.
All right.
Okay, you're very good.
Mary, yeah.
Oh, here, turn over. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I know, I should've told you. I just thought of you, so.
Thank you. Now... You gotta go stand up there by yourself.
I said, "I take a picture."
This is sad. We'll take one together, so we're...
Stay in the middle.
First watching on Channel 6, I'm sure it's sad.
All right, so I wanna be in the middle. I wanna take one more. Aunt Ann of the village, you guys wanna come, Eric? Come on up. Come on. Come on, take a picture with us. Mike?
Cindy?
Cindy, come on. Cindy, come on, you gotta come up here. Cindy, come on. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Everybody, real quick, we're gonna, we're gonna start a regular meeting. Not gonna be a long meeting, but if anyone wants to go, you more than welcome to leave. If you wanna stick around, it won't be long. And then, before we go to executive session, anybody who wants to go across the hall here, there's cupcakes and coffee. And we shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a very long meeting, so if you wanna stick around, stick around. If you wanna go, it's just have...
We won't be offended.
All right, so, guys, you three can go, it's okay. So, everybody can stand up for the plaid music, please.
I'd like to be just as high on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and free, for the freedom and justice of our home.
Trustee Bailey. Just sit here.
Here.
Trustee Clancy.
Here.
Trustee Angler.
Here.
Trustee Fedora.
Here.
Trustee Germany.
Here.
Trustee Gilbert.
Here.
And Mayor Montanius.
Here. Here, we're going to scout in Mokina. We have a Boy Scout troop 40 and 41. Anybody here to speak? Beth Hayden, or anybody? Please come on in.
I just wanted to thank everyone for supporting Troops 40 and 41. This is our first-ever pancake breakfast, so I'm very happy that it was approved and we can sell our tickets because this really is gonna help our troops in scouting Mokina. I'll also be selling tickets after the meeting, so.
You get it, audience, get it off.
When is the pancake breakfast?
It's gonna be May 10th from 8:30 to 12:07.
And where's it at?
At St. John's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna add anything there? All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. Make this community calendar pretty.
On the community calendar for May 2025, on May 1st, the Illinois State Treasurer, Michael W. Freewich's Iu. Cash Program is from 10 o'clock AM to 2 o'clock PM at the Village Hall. A representative from the Illinois State Treasurer's office will be searching for Will County residents' unclaimed property. May 5th, the Mokina Fire Department has a CPR class from 5:30 PM to 9 o'clock PM at 19853 South Wolf Road. For more information and/or to register online at mokinafire.org or at station number one. Mokina 5th is also the next free leaf-and-branch pickup for bags of leaves and bundles of branches. You can call 708-479-3900 or visit mokina.org to sign up. May 7th, the village of Mokina's food truck on Front Street starts up at 4 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM on Front Street in our downtown Mokina. For more information, you can visit mokina.org or you can call 708-479-3900. On May 7th is our Site Plan and Architectural Review Committee meeting at 6 o'clock PM at the Village Hall. May 9th, the Mokina Park District's Daddy Daughter Ball at the Oaks Recreation and Fitness Center. It's from 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock PM at 10847 Laporte Road. Pre-registration and a fee is required. For more information and to register, visit www.mokinapark.com or call 708-390-2401. And then, May 12th is the next Village Board of Trustees meeting at 7 o'clock PM at the Village Hall.
Thank you, clerk.
You're welcome.
We got public comments. Anybody for public comments?
Jim Sligo from Mokina, Illinois. Tomorrow, the Knights of Columbus are having a blood drive from 8 o'clock to 12 o'clock. They're hoping to get $40 viewers for blood. Last time, we only got 38. They're trying to run blood drives every quarter. St. John's ran one two weeks ago. Their goal was 22, and they only got 17. But the blood people were very happy to get that 17. Now, when you consider, they're sending four people out, all the blood for good, all the people that from St. John's and the Knights have volunteered. And we also have our own blood drive in September to honor a loved one in Barrio Square that was, had leukemia. They had to have multiple transfusions. We probably, at the most, raise 200 gallons of blood a year in this town. And I'm sure out of the 20,000 population, a lot of us are people that need blood transfusions. I ask everybody, and please think about voting on blood rights of yours. I think it's really important to help our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe.
All right, welcome, sir and gentlemen. Mr. Tom Sasek.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, three items that consented to this evening are as follows. First item is a motion to accept the recommendation and conditions of the Site Plan and Architectural Review Committee, thereby approving the site plan, landscape plan, building elevations, and photometric plan and light fixtures as depicted on the attached exhibits for the general building, supply building, to be located at southwest corner of 192nd Street and 80th Avenue. Second item is a motion to accept the recommendation of the Site Plan and Architectural Review Committee, thereby approving the site plan and attached exhibits for the proposed rooftop solar panel installation at the losing garage building at 18825 Old Lagrange Road. Final item is a motion to approve the minutes from the April 14, 2025 work session.
Thank you, John. Motion, please.
Move to approve consent agenda of seven A, B, and C as depicted in the April 24, 2025 request for board action prepared by the village administrator.
Second.
We have a motion, probably second. Clerk, Mr. Clerk.
Trustee Angler.
Hi.
Trustee Fedora.
Hi.
Trustee Germany.
Hi.
Trustee Gilbert.
Hi.
Trustee Clancy.
Hi.
And Trustee Bailey.
Hi.
Okay, doing some best. Now, we have, have those negotiated comments, John?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna just can't move aside this evening. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody in the crowd this evening. I'd like to thank you and the rest of the village for turning out for our first Comp Plan Open House that was held last week, April 22nd, at the police station. We had over 105 residents come out, which, based on our consultants, which is Tuscan Associates, they were extremely impressed for a community our size with getting that many out. We did reach out, we didn't market as much as we could to try and get that crowd, so we were very thankful to get that. We did have a lot of active engagement. We had a number of our elected officials there. We had a number of our staff members there. I won't forget somebody if I try to go through that list, so I'd just say we had a number of staff and a number of elected officials there. We got to speak with a lot of the individuals as they walked through, so it wasn't just coming in and pointing to a board. There was a lot of great interaction. Some of the key themes that were identified that evening, a lot of the residents wanted to keep the small-town charm, but also support thoughtful, balanced growth. So, that's always the challenge, and I think that's a great, you know, first step. This is the first Comp Plan Open House that we're having, and out of that, to have that type of an idea, I think is good. Moving forward, we're gonna have a lot more opportunities to expand upon that. The priorities that were voted on, there were several different areas that were focused, and those included the growth areas, sustainability, downtown development, and then the commercial corridors. And so, each of the individuals that came in were given a set of stickers, and they were asked to vote for their top five out of nine priorities in each of those areas. So, that is all being compiled. We're gonna get a lot of great data out of that, and then, from there, start working with some themes, bring that back forward for future Comp Plan Open Houses and potentially multiple future meetings. And then, again, in a conclusion, this was a very successful event. I wanna thank the police department for allowing us to have it over there. It was a fantastic room. It worked out incredibly well. We had that room packed. Kristoff wasn't there to kick us out, but I do think we probably got... But I do wanna thank the PD, and again, thank the community, Matt Lar... Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Clancy, congratulations. I look forward to getting to know you and growing our relationship as trustees. Trustee Bailey, congratulations, and I like your barber. Trustee Fedora, it's always a pleasure. Been a couple of years together. So, Mayor, congratulations. Look forward to working with you. Melissa Martini, congratulations, trustee. And Mr. Gilbert, congratulations. Look forward to working with you as well.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Very, um, Mr. Gilbert?
Just another big thank you to everyone. And I know I talked to a few different people about getting together for a meeting. I look forward to getting to know them all better and look forward to those meetings.
Thank you. Trustee Clancy?
No comments tonight.
It's not a bad thing. Trustee Bailey?
Glad we've got a Comp Plan working toward that end. Other than that, no comments.
Thank you. Trustee Fedora?
As Debbie said, looking forward to everybody coming out now to food trucks the first and third Wednesday, May through September, right on Front Street. And then also, we're looking forward to the Chamber's first-ever Front Street Fest, May 16 through 18 in the Metro Lots. Everything's on the website and Facebook and all the places.
Thank you, Melissa. I echo everybody's comments up here. I don't want to repeat, but again, I just want to say congratulations to everyone that got elected and reelected. And remember, we're Team Mokina up here. And, oh.
I already spelled it, but thank you very much.
No comment?
No comments this evening.
Okay, so again, thank you to everybody. I appreciate all your support and help, and we're ready to go. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
We have a motion probably second. Everybody, aye, or adjourned? We gotta go into work session.